We're now on item eight. Approval of Resolution Number 201213-15. To Implement Changes in the Terms and Condition of Employment for the Ramona Teachers Association Bargaining Unit.
For the last eighteen months, the district has engaged in negotiations, mediation, and fact-finding with Ramona Teachers Association. On April fifteenth, two thousand and thirteen, the district representatives met with Ramona Teachers Association negotiating team, following the receipt of the fact-finding report to determine if there was a basis for a settlement. Based upon oral statements made by the parties and a lack of any progress towards bringing the parties closer to a settlement, it was determined that there was no basis for mutual agreement and an impasse still exists. Now, under the law, the district possesses the right to implement terms and conditions of employment as to any matter reasonably contemplated in the district's last, best, and final offer to RTA. This last, best, and final offer was made on October eighteenth, two thousand and twelve. At this time, the recommendation before the board is adoption of the resolution to implement changes in the terms and conditions of employment for the Ramona Teachers Association bargaining unit. This resolution contains imposed terms and conditions of employment that were reasonably contemplated in the district's last, best, and final offer. The resolution specifically addresses revisions to terms and conditions of employment in the areas of: Terms of Agreement; Health and Welfare Benefits; Salary; Work Year Reduction Furlough Days; Class Size; Evaluation and Teacher Workload. Per Board Conversations this evening in closed session, it is my understanding that there may be some support for allowing the cash-in-lie insurance waiver stipend to remain for the current year. I invite the board's attention to a place in the resolution on page two, under Agreement, in the second-to-last sentence, beginning with the word "instead," where it states, "The Board places no restrictions upon RTA's employment implemented herein or any other..." The Board places no restrictions upon RTA's right to meet and negotiate with the district concerning any term and condition of employment implemented herein. Mention upon written request to the district.
I'm going to go now to public comment. When I call your name, could you please come up to the microphone and share what you have to share? And then, when you run out of the three minutes, she will hold up a stop sign.
These teachers give their life's blood. I have seen them. I have seen Mr. Lampy when we have gone on field trips, paying for people lunch because they don't have the money. They pour their life's blood into this, empty. And the teachers are arguing that the glass is half-full, and there needs to be better communication. That is all it comes down to. Thank you.
Our mission is to be wholly focused on our children and the quality of their education. We want a financially stable district that can offer competitive compensation to our educators because it is imperative to protecting and growing the value of our community. We seek the objective truth through review and fact-check of all the statements and documents that are issued by both sides. We maintain respect for board members who are doing their best and working in good faith to do their jobs. And we have incredible compassion for the teachers and RTA members because almost to the last one of our families, we have endured every single crippling financial blow that this recession has dived out. We understand the anxiety of having their livelihood on the line. We're taking a stand tonight because we hope that you will, and we hope that you will respect our right to express our opinion even though we know some of you are not going to agree with us. We seek a resolution that adheres more closely to the independent fact-finding reports because we believe it will result in the least amount of damage possible to all parties, especially our children. We do not support the district's imposition resolution, also from our perspective.
We are here to urge you to do the right thing and decline the imposition. You need to get engaged with the process and find a way to compromise without devastating the teaching community here in Ramona. The proposed cuts to teachers for just this year will take 1.6 million dollars out of our teachers' paychecks and out of the Ramona economy. Add in two more years, and that total becomes 5.4 million dollars that our community and our teachers will not be receiving. Our local economy cannot endure such a hit. I know for sure that many of our teachers are already working two jobs, and this will destroy their life. Many of our young, right teachers are going to jump ship and go to a district that will respect them and pay them more. They only have to go to Poway to make a much better living than they can here. They can also get the maximum out of money in a much shorter time than teachers who live here. Our district will no longer be the shining star, and the bright new teachers will not come here as they have in the past. Actions like the one you are contemplating now are destroying our district. You need to stop what you're doing and find a way to compromise, not just dictate what you will take. We have tried to compromise with you for the past eighteen months to find a middle ground. Our children, our community, and our teachers deserve nothing less.
... employees who have lost positions and have had major cuts to their wages. I know that the district leaders think that they are sailing into the twenty-fourth century of learning, but I see the district as a ship not only losing the wind in its sails...
Good evening, everybody. My name is Melissa Kovich, and I've been a teacher at All Pierce Middle School for fifteen years. And I just wanted, I felt compelled this evening to get up and stand before all of you and finally say what's on my mind. I've been thinking and listening and watching for the last eighteen months, and even really the last two years, the last three years, as we are trying to make decisions to make this a better place. And I keep coming back to one, one thought, and that is, I'm responsible. And in my mind, we all bear responsibility in the situation that we're in. And to me, we're responsible as teachers because this is a great place to work. This is a great district. This is a wonderful community. We're blessed to have parents who care. We're blessed to have students who care. We're blessed to have educators who sit and do all the things that they do. They don't just sit. They stand. They run. They jump. Everything in their power. They do what it takes to make this a good place. We all bear responsibility for that. To me, we all bear responsibility for the situation that we're in right now as well, and make the positives as well as the negatives. For me, it's bearing responsibility for the fact that I've not asked the right questions. For me, it's bearing responsibility that maybe I haven't asked any questions at all. And for me, some of us bear responsibility for making poor financial decisions. For some of us, it's bearing responsibility for allowing ourselves to be sucked into an us-versus-them mentality. And going forward, I'm pleading with both sides, with our board this evening and with our RTA membership. Please find a way to make this go forward in a positive way. Please, if there's any way to negotiate less money from teachers this year, and save some of it, some of it for next year and the year after. If there's any way to make this so that we can all walk out of here with dignity and our heads held high, knowing that we've done the best for this district. Please, make this happen. This district, this community is worth it. We're all worth it. Our kids are all worth it. And let's not just do it for our kids or our community, but teachers, please, board members, please, let's do it for ourselves.
... and make a decision considering that. Before coming to the teaching profession, I worked for a large corporation, and it took more than ten years at Ramona Unified before my salary reached the level it was when I left my corporate job. That didn't matter to me. I'm not in teaching... ... populated with based on the growth. We have stirs that comes out. We have taxes that come out. We have, if we do a 403B, if we do a pre-take legal plan, if we have taken loans against our 403B, those payments come home. I don't know if that's something you're aware of. I hope that you realize that the enormity of this resolution and what it will do to the community of Ramona is not something to take lightly. And I hope that you'll consider dropping the entire retroactive portion of the resolution. So that our family...
... of financial survival.
I live in Risingdale Way in Ramona. I've been here for about eleven years now. I'm coming to you as a community member. And the first thing that I'd like to do is tell you how very grateful I am to have received a response to the letters that I wrote to the board members. I received one from Dr. Jason and also one from Ms. Perfect. I also received a lovely letter from you, Dr. Grayth, and it was very kind of you to respond to me so completely and with such consideration. I've been very aware of the events in the negotiation process over the past few years. And I'm a retired teacher from Poway. I taught at Mount Carmel High School for a hundred years. And I was also a negotiator for the Poway Federation of Teachers for over a dozen years. And so I'm coming to you from that background. I want to tell you that I'm really heartbroken over what has come to pass or impasse here in the district. There, the adequate money that has been created is really devastating, and it's destructive. And teachers put so much energy into what they do for kids. I've talked to millions of teachers in my, in my career as both a teacher and as a negotiator. And I have found that teachers talk about what they do in two different ways. Some people call teaching a calling, and they use a certain set of vocabulary. And you have heard a lot of that this evening about how people talk about the calling. Other people talk about teaching as a profession, and they use a different set of vocabulary. And that's usually when they're talking about wages and benefits and that kind of thing. What I want to talk to you about is about respect and about trust. And both of those things have to be in place in order to have any kind of negotiations. The heartfelt pleas for people, by people this evening who are requesting that no resolution is made this evening and that negotiations continue is very heartfelt. And that can happen if a couple of things, if a couple of things come into place. First of all, there has to be mutual respect here. Now, my understanding is that there's, there are slated to be gigantic pay cuts for teachers and for clerical staff in the district. I have also come to understand that some people have received raises. I, I want you to know that I know that those raises are well-deserved. No one has not, doesn't work hard in this district. Everybody deserves a raise in this district. But please understand how disrespected teachers feel when they're going to be asked to turn their pockets inside out, and some people are taking home more money. That's an issue of disrespect. That interferes with negotiations. That, that interferes with fruitful negotiations. Another issue is, there's a mysterious $800,000 that didn't turn up in the budget when the fact-finding took place, and now, and now exists in the world. And, and I understand the fundamentals of this. I assure you, but this is an issue of trust. People feel that they can't trust the district to step forward with honesty. That interferes with... Another point is that...
Can you wrap up your...
Let her finish!
Let her finish!
Let her finish!
I'll speak as fast as I can. The third point is that the fact-finding is asking for, recommending a certain number, a certain percentage of wage decreases in order to keep the district solvent. Why is the board coming up with a different number? There, there, it's also a matter of trust and respect. Teachers are willing to take the cut when there's no money, but when there's this fancy number that's generated and is not based on data that people can agree on, it really interferes with negotiations. And finally, I understand that the, the fact-finding has recommended a three-year contract, and I know why. I was a negotiator. I absolutely know why. However, to put in place a three-year contract with no contingency language is terrifying to teachers. That's disrespectful, and it totally wipes out any trust that anybody could possibly have. I come to you in the greatest respect. I know how difficult all of this has to be for you. My husband has always worked in business, and he's told me that it's so much more fun to work for a company when you're earning a lot of money than when there's no money. And we all know that. You, you have a terrible job to do. I know that. But please, oh, please, oh, please, let's do it with respect. Let's do it with dignity. Let's do it with honesty. Let's develop the trust that needs to happen so that we can all come through this process, not as them and us, but as we, moving forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jos.
Run for the school board, guys.
Yeah.
I'm going to my folks, have speaker cards to come up.
I also support a family of four. We live within our means. Currently, we are applying for a modest home loan. The $5,551 removed from my income eradicates the money we budgeted for closing costs. But even more harmful than that, the board's decision to retroactively decrease my salary drastically slashes my documented earnings from May and June. With that change in those two paychecks, it will be nearly impossible to qualify for a loan. My family is devastated. There are others here whose families are being devastated. Please, with leadership, we can, we can control this. This is not a wildfire that is out of our control. We can work together, and we can limit the devastation. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca.
A little different perspective. This isn't about the budget. If it were, you wouldn't ask teachers to take drastic cuts while voting to increase the superintendent's compensation. If it were... If it were, you would implement every proposal to increase revenue and decrease expenditures, no matter your personal bias. If it were about the budget, you wouldn't continue to pay expensive attorneys and consultants and offer, offer substitute teachers $275 a day. If it were about the budget, you would accept the fact-finder's report in its entirety rather than omitting the parts with which you disagree. Economically, my friends, it does not make sense. So then, I'm afraid this is about politics. You are betting your political futures on breaking a teacher's union and making a name. Unions have a history, frankly, some of it good, some not. For their many faults, unions give us the ability to stand together against abuses of power like this. The stakes are high. You are betting our union will fold, and you wager the district can withstand a strike. The odds are against you. Through subterfuge, deception, and fear, we will stand. The harder you push us, the stronger we will become. What will happen in our classrooms when we strike? What happened in San Diego, in Poway, in Escondido? Did those people, those administrators make a different bet? No. And they lost. On whose side are our parents? Are parents sympathetic to a board continuing to misuse public money? Or are they likely to side with those of us in the classroom? Odds are, parents know teachers care about their kids, and frankly, that's all that matters to them. This district already lost a high-stakes bet in an ill-advised loan. Before I was a teacher, twenty-three years ago, I dealt craps through Left and Twenty-One for Harris Lake Tahoe and later for Princess Cruises. So I know a bad bet when I see one. I learned that the best gamblers were those who knew what the consequences were of every bet, especially a losing one. Do you? What term will your political futures take when you lose this game? Show us we're wrong. Show us you want to bargain in good faith. If not, you will lose. And you will hear the stick man's call, the last thing a stick man does at a craps game is say this: Seven out seven, line away.
Hello. So I would just like to start off by saying that I'm a senior this year, and I've been in this district since kindergarten. And I do not think of one teacher who hasn't impacted my life personally. This year, I'm going off to Ohio State. And I know that I would not be here today and going where I'm going if it wasn't for one of the teachers, any of the teachers that I had in my life. With that being said, I would just like you to think about who is really stuck in this situation and who is getting hurt by this whole situation. It's the students. It's as if mommy and daddy are getting a divorce, and we are the kids stuck in the middle. We are not getting anything out of it. It's just hurting us. So before you make your decision tonight, I would like you, on behalf of all the students here in the district, to just take an extra minute to think and remember who this is actually affecting because we are the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Murph. Daniel Wise?
Please vote no to impose, restart our lever negotiations in good faith. Look at all the means that we can liquidate district assets and trim administrative expenses. I've heard that kind of ring true here tonight. It's wonderful to know I'm not on some wad late night. I'm here with you tonight. Let's work together as a community, as a board, and as a district to get renegotiated bond in the next battle. Let's look forward to positive solutions. Vote no to impose crashing our pay cuts against teacher-students and our family's livelihood in Ramona. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Alicia Steele?
Gady. Fairly. It's destructive. I am a real person. I work real hours. I have a real family and pay real bills and have college tuition.
Hi there. This isn't my first time talking, and, you know, everyone here knows me pretty well. I'm the Anna Lazzley. I am Kim Lazzley's daughter. I too am a senior at Ramona High School. I have been in this school district since I was in kindergarten. Just but every single one of my teachers is in here, and I am proud to say that I am a Ramona Unified School District child. These people in this room helped raise me. I stand here knowing for a fact I would not be who I am today without the help of the people in this room, as would any other child or parent would agree. Teachers in this small community are who raised the kids, who teach us most of what we know. Oh, gosh, I resent. But you ask any of these teachers, they know who my mom is. They know her not as a school board member because sixteen years ago, my older sister started in this district. And because she spent so much time in the classroom and supporting the community in so many different ways, many of you sitting here in this room asked her to run for this position. You'll make you think that what was best in mind for her has changed when you knew kids are what mattered. People question who they can trust in this situation. I'll give you an idea. How about a woman who since day one has served on PTA? Who at one point served on three different PTAs because she had a daughter in elementary school at Barnett, at OPMS, and at the high school. Who was in hospitality, who has fed almost everyone, you at least once, whether it be for graduation or for the lunches for teacher appreciation because she... Who in 2007 gave up her personal time to help put on an event to help those who lost their homes and who won Citizen of the Year for it. Who helped open a teen center for the kids. A woman who went at a meeting, wants to be on the board, this is Parks and Rec. And when they're deciding the official meeting days, keep saying, no, it can't be that day. I've got this. It can't be that day. I've got that. First Monday till the month of our RHS PTA, the first Wednesday is SBC, and so many other more that I can't even name. Her planner is full of millions of colors reminding her of what's going on. Not to mention the three kids she has, two still living at home, myself in the midst of my senior year at the high school, and the other only in seventh grade. Who this past January won another Citizen of the Year award because this community is her life. I don't know exactly how many years she lived here. I cannot remember. It's been so long. But these teachers, you guys are what matter to her because you have raised her kids. So please, understand that they are having what is best in mind for you guys. It is hard right now, I know, and I see you shaking your heads. But you have to trust it when someone like that who cares about your community so much. If this is really all they can do, this is really all they can do. So please, please try not to go against them this much. It kills me. It kills my family. I can't tell you how hard it's been, my house, knowing she is so stressed. It takes it out on all of us in this being my senior year, having to stand by her and support her through all this. It is really hard. My family has been there for her, and it was a family decision for her to be on this board. And it has affected us way more than we ever thought. But we know she is here for the kids. Please do not forget that they are here for the kids. Thank you.
Mr. President? I would like to thank everybody for speaking. I have heard you.
I filled out a speaker slip, and my name wasn't called.
If you would state your name? If you would state your name.
My name is Chris Ballch. We moved to Ramona in 1984. I've attended Ramona Elementary, Hanson Lane, Mount Woodson, Olive Pierce, and Ramona High. If any of my former teachers are in the audience tonight, you know my story. You know that I came from a broken home. Not a mom-and-dad fight broken home, but a ABC after-school special broken home. We're talking drugs, alcohol, felony spousal abuse. I left home when I was thirteen. I lived with five different families in junior high and high school. The kids that I moved in with, one of them serving a life sentence for murder, one's in jail for armed robbery, and the other's a heroin addict. I was on a path of complete destruction. I was throwing my life away, and nobody gave a damn, except for the teachers that I had. One hundred percent, beyond any shadow of any doubt, I am standing here today because of the teachers that I had. They involved CPS. When CPS needed to be involved, they brought me groceries when I was hungry. Specifically, Sue Weaver and Mr. Cook. Steve Cook have been the most positive influences that I've had in my entire life, including my adult life. I don't stand up here with any solutions, but as a former student, a citizen, and as a father of three that still live in the community, I am saddened and disheartened that my children may not have the opportunity to have such positive influences in their life because of the recruitment and retention problems that this imposition will certainly Mrs. Weaver once told me something that I carry with me every day, and that is, all choices involve cost, and the consequences of those choices lie in the future.
Again, I just wanted to thank everybody for coming and speaking to the board. You have been heard, and not all of us have listened to you, as well as the many emails and discussions that we've had with people outside. I want you to know that I can speak for myself, and I'm sure everybody else can say the same thing, that they care about each one of you as well as about each child in Ramona. And the decisions that we make, they're hard to make, and they've been financially tough for us, as well as it's just financially hard for everybody. I wish that, I wish that things were easier. I come to you now to do something that's tough to do, but I move approval for Resolution 2012, that's 15, to implement the changes in terms and conditions of employment for the Ramona Teachers Association board meeting.
We have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes. Now that I have the floor, I'd like to make a change to my motion. I've moved to amend the motion by changing the implementation date of discontinuing the $1,500 per year financial incentive to waive medical coverage from June 1, 2013, as stated in the resolution, to a new start date of July 1, 2013. The specific language is found on the top page for the actual resolution.
Is there a second to the amendment?
All second.
Is there a discussion on the amendment to the main motion? Seeing there's none, let's vote on just the amendment to the main motion. If approved, the resolution will be amended by changing the implementation date of discontinuing the $1,500 per year financial incentive to waive medical coverage from June 1, 2013 to start, to a new start date of July 1, 2013. All in favor?
Aye.
A present?
A vote present.
Four ayes and one present. That takes us back to the main motion.
May I, may I change my vote? I misunderstood.
Sure.
I, I vote yes.
Would you please record that because fine, yes. Only a minute. That takes us back to the main motion as amended. Is there any further discussion on the main motion? Amended. All in favor of the main motion as amended, please signify by saying aye. Post a no.
Was it made and seconded?
Yes.
Did we get the main motion then?
All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
I vote present.
So the vote is recorded as four ayes, one present, and the motion passes.
Before we move on, I didn't have comments to make before that vote was taken. It's so, I didn't prepare comments tonight, although I've spoken with many community members who have made it very personal. It should be.
It's all politics. It's all about the superintendent. Who cares less about the students in this school?
This is a very regrettable action.
They're not this name, right?
No, we're not.
I used it!
We're moving now to closed session. There will be nothing to report out of closed session.
We were willing to take a cut. We were willing to take a seat, maybe we...
They show up for star testing.